Is that I actually think their response was better than I anticipated.
Good, how are you?
And it's just not.
I was just the thing on Jean, I changed the language just a little, yeah.
It's in my cheat sheet?
Yeah, yeah.
They're just gonna say you don't follow.
Because she's a treasurer.
And then if we go a little bit, what they could do is. She's a contractor. You know, they could go.
No, she's gotta be the treasurer to submit.
But isn't she an independent contractor? No. We're not hiring her as a little boy, we're hiring her on an interim basis.
Cam, what the hell are you doing?
Tell me what the word is.
Well, 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 this is, is she gonna be a consultant?
Just so you know, we're streaming.
She's gonna be a temporary treasurer.
Oh, I can't call him.
Temporary treasurer. She's the treasurer.
Okay.
And we get someone new, she's gonna go, right?
Just make sure I say it right.
Well, this is right, this is right.
As long as it's in there right, then I'll do it. If I step on it, you'll let me know.
Yeah. Should be, yeah. She should be.
Whoa, change the call, I couldn't read this.
Yeah, I wasn't really seeing any of your lines.
No.
I hope you got your stuff in order. And if you don't, we don't really care.
Good evening, Phyllis.
So.
Phyllis?
The last two times.
Hello.
Three times I've missed.
It's not your fault.
So.
Nope, I didn't get it right.
That's one more.
It just, we got it Friday, emailed it to us on Friday.
You may, you may not have been on the emails.
The January meeting?
And I don't think I've heard that yet, but then again, I haven't checked my emails.
I like the way you put it though.
Well.
I could text somebody else.
I know, alright, so apparently, this is off by minutes, so I'm gonna fix this.
What do you wanna know? Right, right, right.
So the February meeting? Is that what you need to know? The February meeting, the nineteenth?
Right. Business meeting.
Who?
Oh, is it the business?
The beds?
It could be adopted at, oh, oh, no.
I did, it's on my wall, but they, they, they took the backing one off and they glued it on, so you can't take it off, so. Alright, hey, everybody, keep in mind, Doris, you can go ahead and make us go live, we're live. Alright, keep in mind that anything you say in the back can be picked up by the ambient mics here, so be careful with that. Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge, please. Face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead, do we know where Trustee Brain is?
Uh, we don't.
Okay, um, so, nope, we're gonna go ahead and get started, um, because I got some stuff to do at the top, which will chew up some time before we get into the resolutions and stuff like that, so, um, first and foremost, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to open the meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, four ayes. I just came from Cornwall Central High School, one of the greatest privileges that I can have, and this is my third year doing it, I don't know why they continue to ask me, cuz I was not academically or conduct-wise inclined to be a member of the National Honor Society and let me speak in front of that august body and, and the parents. And last year, I talked about one of General Schwarzkopf's great speeches about leadership, because one of the roles of the students, and there's fifty-three of them that are being inducted into the National Honor Society at the high school this year, one of the roles is to, um, encourage a leadership role in everything that they do, which is just such a wonderful thing for young kids. I was never that mature, never that academically savvy, never that, um, good conduct prone to be a member of that body. Um, but last year, I talked about General Schwarzkopf, in nineteen ninety-two, he gave an address at the Corps Cadets, um, for the, I think it was the class of nineteen ninety-two's graduation after the Gulf War, and said that leaders are made up of three Cs, character, competence, and communication. And I talked about each of those things, obviously borrowing liberally from General Schwarzkopf's amazing speech on the matter. This year, I talked about, and I'll just leave it with this, the fact that the people that support us, they're important in our lives, but what really fuels us, and I used a couple examples of my life, were the people that told us we'd never be good enough, the people that told us you can't do this. The tactical officer at the United States Military Academy says, Galliano, I don't know how you got in here, and I'm gonna do everything in my power to run you out of here. And those are the kind, and I say that kind of cheekily, but those are the kind of things that fuel you. And I thought, I hope it resonated with the students, but I raced out of there, it was a privilege, the school board was there, obviously the superintendent and, and members of the administration, but, okay, here we are. So let me know, um, for the trustees, sir, for the trustees, um, we are going to go into executive session after this. It is not on the agenda, it is related to a current and ongoing, but new development personnel issue. So Joe, we won't need you for that, it won't be attorney-client, but it will be executive session as soon as this, um, meeting is over. And before we start, and I should have done it when we, when we, um, when we did the pledge, if I can get everybody to stand again, um, two people within the village, um, passed away, um, this weekend. One was Bill Hall, I feel comfortable enough stating his name because I've talked to his wife today, and I think the arrangements and the, and the funeral and the, um, uh, the wake are gonna be at Quigley Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan is taking care of that, but Bill Hall is the gentleman that moved up here with his wife, Alice Hall, at the time. Um, they have children, um, a number of kids, and one of them is a police officer down in Tuxedo that apparently went to Bill Hall's house on River Avenue to discover his lifeless body. Bill was a guy, and Megan, our, our deputy village clerk, was really shook up today because he stopped in last week to see Megan on a matter, water bill, something like that, and then stopped in to talk to me for twenty minutes, just about everything in the village and things. He's just, he's quintessentially Cornwall, he's the guy that posted on Living in Cornwall All the Time, or on his Facebook page, photos of the riverfront, early in the morning and late at night. Um, and the second is a village employee, Mike, is it appropriate for me to say who it is? How about we just say this, a village employee's mother passed away, longtime Cornwall resident. I'm not gonna say any names right now until it's more public, but both of these happened within twelve hours of each other, twelve hours of each other this weekend, longtime Cornwall people, so maybe just a moment of silence for those folks in the repose of their souls. Alright, thank you, everybody, take your seats. Alright, we got a, uh, we got a ambitious agenda tonight, um, and we're gonna start off with, Doris, we need to, um, yep, so we got everybody here, so, public comment, there'll be two opportunities for public comment. Pace yourself, I have a number of letters regarding, um, regarding the application for the Savage Wonder Festival, um, which we will discuss and, and deal with tonight, but there's an opportunity to speak on anything, agenda item or not. There'll also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak to anything, agenda item or not. So if anybody wishes to speak tonight, you have three minutes, you can step up to the podium, state your name, sir, and where you reside, and then the floor is yours, Mr. Land.
Uh, hi, Doug Land, sixty Deer Hill Road, trustees mayor. Back to my favorite subject, I was thrilled to see on the agenda that there's gonna be addendum to the Fios or, uh, franchise agreements. Just urging you to keep on looking at that issue, uh, I know it's not gonna be quick, but if you drive along the boulevard now, I don't know if you've seen it, but one of the Fios wires, I can touch it, it's, it's hanging. There is no, and I think I said this last time, so I, I'll keep it to under three minutes, there doesn't seem to be any, uh.
Accountability?
Yeah, accountability, and, and, and just, and again, I know it's, I've actually talked to the Fios guys. They can only do what they get a work order for, they, they literally can't do, they can't touch a wire if they don't get a work order, and the work order either comes from Albany or from somewhere else, somebody who knows nothing about our village could care less about what wires are hanging down, so, maybe sometime next year, we could ask Fios and Spectrum to come in and just figure out, cuz otherwise it's just gonna get worse. Again, you drive along the boulevard now, literally, I can hold, I can hold the wire, and it's, anyway. But thank you for adding that addendum, just an issue I think is worth continuing to, cuz it will just get worse, thanks.
Well, we're, we're negotiating it, Mr. Land.
So, so Doug, yeah, to your point, you're right, the two things that we wanted was the opportunity for, you know, Wi-Fi for residents and visitors to the park, that's gonna be a little, a little bit more of a difficult sell with them, because I don't wanna say they told us to pound sand, but that's gonna be a little bit more difficult. But the argument that the board's making, that you brought up first, um, to have them remove the unsightly wires when they put up new wires, I think it is beyond reasonable, I can't imagine why they would want to fight us on that, but we do have our attorneys working on that, so we don't have a yes, that's gonna happen, we don't believe the free Fios and Wi-Fi. We're not out of the woods on the Fios yet, but the Wi-Fi is probably not gonna happen, is that my understanding from what Dave said?
Always our comment, Dave, Dave knows better than me.
Got it, but we are still fighting the good fight on having them take the wires down. Doug, your point is well taken, so, thank you, yep, we'll, we'll stay on it. Alright, anybody else for public comment, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Seeing nobody, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment session, and we will move to the monthly department reports. And when it comes to, when we do speak about Vet Rep and the Savage Wonder Festival, I will discuss the public comment that was sent to us via written correspondence or the folks that have called and entered, um, their opinions on same, and we'll discuss it then, so I won't do it during this public session, the public comment session, I'm not gonna read these, okay? Oh, yeah, where did I miss that? Got it, thank you, Doris. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three village board meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes. Alright, moving on to the treasures report. Um, the open utility bouncer's report for the end of August reads as follows. Village water, sewer, garbage, and penalties, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-one cents. Town water and penalties, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, for a total of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Monthly revenue expenditure reports by fund, general fund revenue, four million, two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents, expenditures of three million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Water fund revenue, one million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents, with expenditures of one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents. And finally, sewer funds revenue, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents, with expenditures of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. This totals up to total receipts of six million, six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, or eighty point sixty percent in anticipated revenues, and five million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-seven cents, or sixty-eight point two-nine percent in anticipated expenditures through the end of September. The amount collected in village taxes and penalties is two million, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and, I'm sorry, two million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand and two dollars and nineteen cents through the end of October, and the balance collected for sewer capital is five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-two cents through October thirty-first. I'm gonna make a motion to approve warrant number eleven in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to the board department reports, building department, trustee Carnwright.
Report for October twenty-twenty-three, building department. Building permits issued eighteen, certificate of compliance occupancy issued sixteen, onsite inspections thirty-five, violations four, stop work orders zero, municipal searches five, solar panels one, fire inspections four. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer.
Senor Carmona, anything to add? Okay, members of the board of trustees, any questions for the building inspector? We had a robust conversation, would you agree it was a robust conversation this morning in regards to current and ongoing matters within the village?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any trustee have any questions or issues for the building inspector? Seeing none, we're gonna move on, and the next matter is the fire department, trustee Brain.
Cornwall-on-Hudson Fire Department, October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three department report, there were, uh, among events, there was six EMS calls, one structure fire, two automatic alarms, four fire prevention calls, two honor flight, uh, attendances, four fire prevention calls or, uh, events, uh, one apparatus in station maintenance, and two meetings for a total of twenty-two events. Uh, the chief reports that engine four-one-one is now fully equipped to meet Orange County's criteria for a squad. Its new radio identifier is squad four-one-one, and it is first due to motor vehicle accidents. Uh, Jim Pachenza is a fifty-two-year member of the Storm King Fire Engine Company Number Two and a Vietnam War combat veteran. Jim participated in the thirty-first mission of Hudson Valley Honor Flight on October twenty-first. The Cornwall-on-Hudson Fire Department, TL four-one-three, assisted with Montgomery Fire Department with displaying the American flag as the veterans departed for their mission. The Cornwall-on-Hudson Fire Department was at Stewart Airport to receive them as they returned from the mission and to escort Jim and his family home from the airport. Boat four-one-six has been removed from its slip from the Cornwall Yacht Club. It will remain in service for a few more weeks and then will be serviced and shrink wrapped for the winter. October is Fire Prevention Month, department members provided fire prevention classes to all Cornwall-on-Hudson Elementary School classes, Butterhill Day School, and the Village Nursery School at the Presbyterian Church. Respectfully submitted, Charles R. Quinn, Fire Chief.
Chief, anything to add? Assistant chief, anything to add? Trustees, any questions for the Fire Chief or the Assistant Chief?
Structure fire, was that anything, uh? Okay, but nothing significant from property damage or anything like that, it was not a.
Something left on a stove, chief? Got it, okay, police department, Bill, you're still up.
Right on. The Cornwall-on-Hudson Police Department Monthly Report, October first through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, there were four hundred and thirty-two total calls for service, there were zero felonies. Uh, one fraud or identity theft call, uh, four pedic larceny calls, one harassment or aggravated harassment call. There were no arrests in October. Vehicle and traffic reporting, there were seven property damage accidents, four traffic summonses issued, five traffic warnings issued, three parking summonses issued, six traffic enforcement posts, and two radar or speed sign postings. Uh, non-criminal activity, there were four fire response calls, three domestic incidents, one alarm response call, two noise complaints, seven suspicious incident calls, six animal complaints, and no disorderly person calls. Uh, the department assisted other departments twelve times to the Town of Cornwall Police Department, twelve times with EMS, two times they performed welfare checks, two citizens assists, and, uh, assisted other Cornwall-on-Hudson departments one time. During the month of October twenty-twenty-three, the Cornwall-on-Hudson Police Department applied for approximately forty thousand, four hundred dollars and thirty cents in grant funding through a New York State DCJS Law Enforcement Technology Grant. This agency applied for the following equipment, card scan, fingerprint computer program, a new and updated camera system for COHPD headquarters, three tasers, seven tasers, and one AED Automated External Defibrillator. During the month of October, COHPD officers attended the following trainings. Police Officer Thompson, uh, attended first, uh, pet first aid for first responders, and Police Officer Ryle responding to gas and electric emergencies. During the month of October, the COHPD provided both traffic and security for the First Annual Motivation Charity Five K Road Race Event. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Chief, anything to add? One of the things, and I stopped by, Assemblyman Ikus had a coffee for Cornwall-on-Hudson this morning. Former Deputy Mayor Gazda was there, um, as well as the former mayor, Joe Gross, and a number of other constituents were there. I stopped by, one of the complaints that I overheard, and Chris and I had a conversation about it afterwards, chief, and maybe it's something that me and you sit down and talk about and try to come up with some type of plan, was speeding. I mean, it seems to be, I don't wanna say, the term I've heard is emergent issue. I don't believe that it's an emergent issue, I think this has been going on for a long time, but maybe it's something that we need to figure out a way, and I know it's tough with de-policing being encouraged out of Albany, but I think there's something we need to do, and these are, these are from disparate neighborhoods, they're from the mountain, they're from Bayview, they're from Homeland, they're from River Avenue. It's not like there's one clique of folks that's saying, hey, you gotta crack down on this, it's like I'm getting it from all across the village. So maybe, chief, it's something you and I sit down and talk about and see if there's something we can do, maybe it's in concert with the state police or the Orange County Sheriff's Office, but there, there is, there are a lot of people that are very concerned, especially on our major thoroughfares, two eighteen, Hudson Street are the biggest ones, River Avenue, so just think about that, and maybe you and the sergeant can talk about it, see if there's something you can come up with. I know we have a small department, I know that we've exercised, you know, putting out, um, those, they're not speed traps. What do you call those flashing, your speed?
Speed radar signs.
Speed radar signs, but maybe we can come up with something creative to try to get out ahead of this, cuz that, that does seem to be something that resonates, and again, it's from all neighborhoods and all walks of life that are, today I got an earful about it, so I just, maybe you and I can meet on that, and I'll brief the board on some ideas that you can come up with on things that we can be proactive on, alright? Trustees, anything else for the chief? Alright, moving on to Department of Public Works, trustee Paliota. Ma'am.
October twenty-twenty-three, trash collected for the month. One hundred and forty point eight-three tons, recycling collected for the month, twenty-six point twenty-five tons. Yard waste collected for the month, a hundred yards. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties. Uh, preparation of winter equipment for the season, sweeping of the streets, repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles, fall bulk pickup was completed week of October sixteenth. Regraded parking lot at Riverfront in, in preparation of paving, cleaning of ditch lines on Deer Hill Road, Deer, Deer Hill Road. Meet with FEMA and have started paperwork for recovery, new plow truck for mountain area is in service. Notes, I attended NICOM's Public Works School, October fifteenth through the eighteenth. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Dave, where do we stand with FEMA, and Mike, that's gonna be my follow-up question to you. You guys have done the bulk, the yeoman's labor in regards to meeting with them. Where do we stand with them on the monies that we're trying to recover or recoup from the July ninth storm?
It's a slow go.
Absolutely, it's a federal government, I'm well aware of, I'm well aware of how the federal government works, but.
Paperwork is in process, we're doing what we can do, working with the engineer, and it's, it's a process.
Got it, Mike, same?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay, um, anything to add, Dave, to the report?
It was basic, Riverfront.
That was a, that was, that was a big one, I think the paving of the Hudson Island Nature Museum, um, which had never been done in our history, we, that place has been there since nineteen sixty-eight. We have boiled and chipped it, but it had never been paved until the village just did it, which I think, having a relationship with them, it is a not-for-profit that provides a huge service to our residents and visitors alike. Um, it was, it was long overdue, and I'm glad that, uh, Dave was able to figure out a way to get it done in this year's budget, so it just got repaved, um, Tilcon, who handled it, um, also did down at the waterfront. I got a lot of nice phone calls from people because the original work that we had done there to, to basically scratch up the damage that had been done by CSX, July ninth, July eleventh, and July fifteenth, cuz those days will live in infamy for me, cuz I was furious. Um, Dave's guys patched it up, and CSX did the right thing, um, they coughed up the funds to repair it, and the village got the money, and then the village contracted with Tilcon, and thank you to Dave and his guys. Um, they did it in one morning, and Dave's guys striped it, and if you get a chance to go down to the Riverfront, take a look at it, it was, it was really well done, so thank you for the Hudson Island Nature Museum, which is ours, we, it's a village, we own it, it's ours, as well as the waterfront, I was very pleased we got that done just under the weather window, because we struggle with the paint and with the asphalt, just because it's getting colder, but thank you for that. Any questions from trustees for the DPW super?
Yeah, when does the yard waste collection end?
Good question.
Snowfall. It's snowpav.
Well, you told me I wasn't allowed to use the S-word, and you just used it, so, I told you I couldn't say that.
So, so long as the weather stays good, we'll continue to do it every Monday, and depending on timeframe, we might be able to squeak an act of one in here or there.
Can you make a quick note for me? Tomorrow, could you just put a quick, uh, note on the village website and the Facebook page under your, under your, your hand?
Sure.
And just basically say, the village will continue to pick up yard waste unless and until we get a winter storm?
Four-letter word.
And I didn't say it, I said winter storm, I didn't say the S-word. Alright, thank you, any other questions from trustees? Good question, Dave, by the way. Nope, alright, moving on, next, let me move on. Next one is the water department, trustee Carnwright.
Uh, water department, October twenty-twenty-three, monthly production daily average, eighteen million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons, daily, six hundred, six hundred and five thousand gallons. We collected six, sixty samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Per, for preliminary work is being completed to bring our plant online, that's for treatment, transmission and distribution, seventy-one utility markouts were completed. Dirty water complaint on the boulevard found to be, uh, pressure-reducing valve malfunction. Water main breaks, Shore Road, um, curb valve repaired, one-oh-one Laurel, one-thirty Continental, leak repaired by property owner at twenty-one, uh, twenty Idile Isle Avenue. We blacktopped the leak sites. Meters, red commercial meters, seven final, final water meter readings were completed, thirty-one residential water meters replaced on the, under the replacement program. Thirty-three water line inspections were completed, eight miscellaneous repairs were completed. Property maintenance, ru, uh, routine property mowing continues. Uh, nice deck inspection of high-hazard dams was completed. Dam maintenance continued July ninth, storm damage repair work. Other, Main Street Bridge Water Main Project bid opening was conducted on October thirty-first. Uh, we performed an inspection of Stone Hollow Development Water System, repair work is ongoing. New York Military Academy Fire Hydrant Flow Test was performed, six out of the seven hydrants tested failed. Well, that's great to know. These hydrants are owned and maintained by NEMA. Michael Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Michael, anything to add?
Just add a reminder to residents that we're coming to the end of the meter replacement project, so if you haven't called to schedule an appointment, please do so.
Okay, well put, thank you, what percentage is done, Mike?
Um, we're at about eighty-five percent.
Wow, pretty good, good. Any other trustees with questions for the water super?
Um, just to, since we're, since we're all here, can we just summarize once more the water meter requirements for this smart meter replacement, uh, that's ongoing? The, just to make sure that people understand that they need to, if they don't have one, that they need one. Including myself, I, I, I need it for me, but I also.
So, we sent out, there was about three hundred and sixty customers that did not have the newest water meter technology out there. Um, we sent out three notices to the property owners, asking that they schedule appointments to get them.
United States Postal Service.
Yep, to get them replaced, um, we're now in the final stage of that, and starting in January, if you have not gotten your meter replaced, there will be a seventy-five dollar manual read fee that will, fee, that will be added to your, uh, bi-monthly water bill, um, because by not getting your meters changed, we have to come out to your house to read the meter.
It costs us money to send manpower out there to do it, as opposed to be able to do it remotely.
Correct, and the other enticement, trustee Brain took part in this, we, we were part of a beta test for the Mi three-sixty, which allows the end-users to, to access their own water meter data. Um, that should be going live for the general public in December sometime.
Outstanding, now that's for all in-state users?
All in-state users can sign up, and they'll be able to monitor their own water consumption, they'll be able to set alarms, alerts, in case they have a leak, um, or if they go away and whatnot.
Excellent. Bill, answer a question?
Yes, indeed.
Any other question from trustees? Alright, with that said, moving on to New Windsor and Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, the, uh, the October report, twenty-twenty-three, with respect to personnel, there were three new volunteers, one new part-time paramedic, no injuries to staff or members. The annual mandatory training has started, such as sexual harassment. As for operational, there were four hundred and fifty-four total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered. Three hundred and one patients were transported, there were over four thousand, two hundred and fifty calls for the year, they're on track for five thousand calls in twenty-twenty-three. There were two hundred and sixty-nine in New Windsor, sixty-seven calls in Cornwall, nine in the village, seventy-one mutual aid ALS standbys provided times to various locations of private transport, non-emergency transport for residents. The average response time for New Windsor was six minutes, fifty-six seconds for Corn. For Cornwall was five minutes fifty-four seconds and Cornwall and Hudson, it was seven minutes thirteen seconds. The Cornwall unit covered eighteen calls in New Windsor. The New Windsor unit covered seven calls in Cornwall and, and in the village. The Windsor units have all, all have new AEDs which replaced units from two thousand and ten. The new ambulance for New Windsor should arrive in December and the medic fly, medic fly car struck a deer and it's being repaired. As for administrative and other, New Windsor EMS was awarded the Governor's Medal of Service for their actions at the MVA, at the bus MVA motor vehicle accident in Wallkill. Covac gifted, Covac gifted New Windsor EMS their ambulance. It's gonna be sold to offset, to offset the cost of new ambulance and equipment. The DAZZI grant has finally been approved from Senator Scoopfus. This funding will go towards paying off vehicle one seventy-two in Cornwall, in which the grant was intended. And Tim McCarty retired from New Windsor EMS and he was one of the first paramedics hired at New Windsor EMS in two thousand and nine. And.
That already happened. It was last Friday.
Last Friday. And that's it from the COO, Michael Biggs.
All right, two things to add to that. There was a, a news report the other night on one of the cable news networks and it was dealing, it was talking about EMS services out in the Midwest. And it was out in an area between like South Dakota, North Dakota, Montana. I think they talked about parts of Nebraska where there is services sharing. And the concerns from the residents were, we can't wait thirty-five minutes, which is the average time for an ambulance to respond. They were hoping to get to what they considered to be the gold standard, twenty minutes. So when you look at this, you know, and these numbers in Cornwall, five point, five minutes and fifty-four seconds in the town, seven minutes and thirteen seconds in the village, we're blessed. That's the gold standard. Think about the way it is in other communities. We're very blessed. And the board is gonna expect that so long as we're part of this agreement with the town and New Windsor ambulance service, we expect this. Hundred percent response rate and we expense, we expect these crazy low response times. Okay. And lastly, I just wanna make one note. The deputy mayor mentioned Tim McCarty, who is a member of the town council, forty years in New York State EMS, forty years. So finally hung up the stethoscope, if you will, but we appreciate Tim's service. He's done a great job for the Cornwall community, the West Point community. He served as the fire chief at Storm King Engine Number Two, correct Mike and Charlie? So Tim's really giving back a lot to this community and it was nice to see him feted the way that he was on his way out after forty years. Okay, moving on to the heavy stuff. So we finished all that. That's the department reports. That is done. And now we're moving on to resolutions and I am gonna introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. I'm gonna ask the board to accept the resignation of our part-time treasurer, Gabrielle Ferrier, with regret. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, that moves me to my next point, cause the part-time treasurer was here for four months. And we are in a position where we are at the, the town just finished their budget season. Blessedly, they just got their budget approved. Town's budget is in the fifteen million dollar range, ours including water is in the seven million dollar a year range. But we are in the thick of things and I encourage the superintendents to make sure that they stay engaged with our current treasurer, whose, whose last day will be Wednesday, since the village is closed on Thursday and Friday, until we appoint a new treasurer, which I'm going to do now. So Jean Mahoney, the twenty-nine-year veteran of the village who retired as the village clerk. I think it was official in August, right? But she, she left in July or June, ended June. Was it September? Left September fifteenth, has graciously agreed to come back in a part-time capacity to serve as our part-time treasurer and to get us to the reorganization meeting. Remember, our cycles are different from the towns. So our budget has to be approved by the village board February first of two thousand and twenty-four and it is implemented March first of two thousand and twenty-four. If the village board, and obviously I have to have it to them, long before February first, if the village board is unable to come up with what our budget should be, the first addition of that budget is what becomes the budget. So we obviously wanna make sure that the village board gets it in a timely fashion, has their opportunities to discuss this with our treasurer and as well with our superintendents and me as the chief budget officer before we vote on this budget, because it must be in effect and voted on by February first. So we'll work out the dates and the times with village meetings to make sure that that happens. So Jean Mahoney has agreed to, and we're working out the contract details now, but come to work for the village at the rate of, I can say the rate, correct? The board's gonna vote on it.
Sure.
One way or the other, forty-five dollars an hour in a part-time capacity. Part-time capacity, if you're looking at it for higher in the village, is one thousand and forty hours a year. Full-time is two thousand and eighty hours a year. She does not wanna be here any longer than April first and has said to me that she will not be here any longer than April first. This is a part-time commitment to the village. She has done the last ten budgets. We don't have to retrain somebody to come in and learn Cornwall and Hudson, to learn our budget, to learn us, which is a big undertaking as well. She will work most of her time remotely from home. When she needs to come here, we will provide a desk and a computer for her to work. She'll engage with Gabby over the next couple of days and, and, and stay in touch with her via the phone. But she knows where things are. She obviously knows all the superintendents. She'll engage with them. She will get us through the budget season and she'll get us to reorg, which is all I'm asking her. During that time, I will then come up with another posting for a part-time village treasurer. Even though that we are allowed to hire a full-time treasurer, I will not seek to hire a full-time treasurer until we hire somebody part-time and they've been here a significant amount of time to show, you know, that they can do the job, commitment to the village, that they're not going anywhere. And then we will look, the board, because we have a position for a full-time treasurer, will look to see if that can and should be done. So that will happen while Jean is here, so long as the board, and I've already talked to them about her terms and conditions. Our attorney for the village is working on that contract, which is not signed yet because the board has to vote tonight on it. Obviously, I took a straw poll, not to be embarrassed up here at the dais, but I am going to make a motion to hire former retired village clerk Jean Mahoney to come back, sir?
Appoint, appoint.
Appoint.
Well, there, there's, there is a difference in this context and it's important. I didn't mean, didn't mean to correct you, but.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Jean Mahoney to be the village's part-time treasurer up until April first at terms and conditions set by this village board with an hourly fee rate of forty-five dollars per hour and other details, which I have already shared with this village board and none of them have had a problem with it or expressed it to me. And there's nothing additional to that, but I want council to draw that up into a contract, get Jean to sign it and get the board to affirm it. But for tonight's purposes, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one comment.
I figured you would be, you would be further discussion.
Well, I don't wanna be too preachy here. The, the position of clerk, whether it's held part-time or full-time, is a.
Yeah, just speak up.
Oh, okay. So the position of treasurer, whether it's part-time or full-time, is an officer of the village. That is a statutory two-year term. So really what you're doing is you'd be appointing Jean from the, for the balance, in theory, for the balance of the recent treasurer's term. But your expectation, the expect.
Resignation.
Correct. And the, the expectation is that will only be through April first, Jean, if you're watching.
Well, well, as, as the former village clerk slash treasurer very coyly reminded me, she was asked ten years ago if she would take on the treasurer position just for a short while. And ten years later, she retired as the village treasurer. So I get it, Joe. Good point.
Let's not scare her off.
Yes, let's not scare her off. Joe, can, did you hear all that and can you, can you introduce the resolution with Joe's words?
It's, it's on, it's on the sheet. You're, you're making a motion to appoint.
That's it?
Jean Mahoney as clerk on a part-time basis, as village clerk, as village treasurer.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jean Mahoney, village treasurer, on a part-time basis at the rate of forty-five dollars per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Done deal. Okay. Next item on here is to set a time and place for a public hearing on a proposed local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, or section three dash C. So I'm gonna, should I read this, Joe? You should probably read it, this one, or no?
Read, read some of the big paragraphs at least, I guess.
Which paragraphs do you consider to be big?
Why don't you, why don't you read? Read the first paragraph.
Jimmy just showed me. All right, so which one, Jim? This one? So whereas the village board is mindful and prudent, no, I'm sorry, is mindful that prudent fiscal decisions are one of the mainstays of good government. The village board is also mindful that certain essential services must be provided to the residents of the village of Cornwall and Hudson. The village board desires to have the flexibility to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing twenty twenty-four that exceeds the real property quote, tax levy limit, close quote, as defined by general municipal law, section three dash C. If necessary to provide essential services. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider overriding the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved. Just do that one? That the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SEAKER and let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law to override the ta, the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, sub, section three dash C and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SEAKER on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven oh one PM at this village hall located three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one two five two zero. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Let me just say this, this board will in no way seek to raise taxes for anything new. The reason that we seek this relief, and it's generally underneath two percent as allowed and required by New York State. I don't know what that percent is going to be this year. It could be one point eight percent, it could be one point two percent, it could be one point nine nine percent. It's generally under two percent. The reason why the budget always incrementally increases is because of the contracts we have. The contracts change. People stay around longer and they get cost of living adjustments and the union contracts, they, they, they get benefits. We have to honor those. So it's not because Jimmy Galliano or this board wants to build another Taj Mahal across the street from Village Hall. It has nothing to do with that. I tell all of our superintendents, keep your budget flat. If you need to move things from sidewalks to paving, figure it out. Keep your budgets flat. The, the increase is only because we do have increases in salaries, entitlements, benefits and retirements. It really isn't, it's a, it's a non-starter argument to do this. So I'm gonna try to keep it as tight as possible. The, the, the current village treasurer is working to do that, cause I'd love to not have to go over it by a percent or two, but it's only there to protect us in the event that that's the case. All right.
Two other things. We've, we've passed this resolution every year since this, this law was passed.
Ten years ago, maybe?
Yeah, and about ten years ago, and we've never exceeded it. The second thing is, is by law, it's two percent. It started as two percent. But when it gets, when our budget gets sent to the state, the state comptroller goes through it and sometimes that number actually is not two percent. It's gone down to like one point eight percent, because some things are included, some things are exempted. So while most people think it's two percent, many times it's one point eight percent or one point seven percent. So we do this as just in case. I mean, I'd bet my mortgage on the fact that that's not gonna happen this year, but the bottom line is that we've done it every year. So this is not an anomaly. This is what we've done every year, just to be safe. Just in case that number, that two percent is, you can't go over a half a percent instead of going over the limit by two percent. Okay?
Yeah. Any other trustee wanna weigh in on that? I mean.
No. Do you know what it is this year, Mark?
No.
We don't. We haven't gotten it yet. No.
No, you, we sent, what happens is it's afterward to post this. That's why we do this upfront.
And this allows us to go over it if the, if we have to, okay? All right, so with that in mind.
I will just say that.
Yeah.
There will be public hearings on the budget as well.
Yeah.
There'll be public hearings on the budget as well and somebody doesn't like how much money we're spending on sidewalks or tree removal or whatever, they can do that. So, okay. All right, so I am going to say, be it resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, fire commission chairperson appointment.
Uh, wait, are you gonna schedule a public hearing for the budget?
No worries. All right, nope, I missed it. So approve the public hearing for the budget. Where is that? Is that this one? Who has it? Joe, you have it?
Well, we're gonna do this one on the fly. So you're gonna schedule a public hearing.
Let's do it on the fly.
Public hearing to schedule the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five village fiscal budget, twenty-four.
Twenty-five or twenty twenty-four?
I'm a little bit ahead tonight. Twenty twenty-four budget, presumably it's December, the December meeting?
Okay, that would be.
Eighteenth?
Yep.
Twenty twenty-three.
We have meetings on the eleventh and the eighteenth. Eleventh is the work session, eighteenth is the business meeting. So we'll do it on the eighteenth. Did you make the motion or are you sending it to me to do it? So I'm gonna make a motion to set the date for the public hearing here in the Edward C. Moulton Junior Boardroom at Village Hall, three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one two five two zero, scheduled for Monday night at seven oh one PM on December eighteenth at the village board business meeting. May I have a second?
Second. You have to actually explain what it's for.
Oh.
For a budget.
Didn't you, oh, you didn't say the bu, well, it's to, it's for public hearing.
A lot of things. All right.
To obtain public comment on the tentative.
Public comment.
Village budget for twenty twenty-four.
To obtain public comment for the tentative budget for the village for twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll just note, there are at least three public hearings right now for that night. We didn't, we didn't adopt them yet, but they're.
We got, we got public hearings, so it'll be one, two, three at the top of the meeting. Okay, got it. All right, next item, am I right here, is the fire commission chairperson appointment. First of all, Mr. Gianpolo's here and I wanna thank him. We had a, we had a lengthy conversation the other day. Rick is a member of our fire commission, was appointed along with trustee Rich Gaylord, who has since left the board, who was the chairperson for the fire commission, which oversees fire operations within the village Cornwall and Hudson, along with former chief Jeff Armidage. With Rich's departure, we have a vacancy. We have received through word of mouth, three applicants, which we're reviewing. But one of the things that we noted is that we need to make a public announcement of same, in case there are people that didn't get the word. So as of tonight, I've directed the village clerk to post this on our Facebook page as well as on the village website. And there's a two-week notice that anyone that feels that they have the skills and the abilities and the knowledge to be a member. You don't necessarily have to be somebody with firematic experience. It's obviously helpful if you do have some kind of association with a fire department, but we're just looking for people in the leadership realm that might have some type of accounting or oversight, just some type of skill sets that would be interested in serving. Here's my offer. There are no pay and benefits. There's no vacation time. This is a volunteer job. So it's one of those take it or leave it things, but the committee meets, I'm sorry, the commission meets at designated times. It's not necessarily monthly. It's when they need to meet in regards to a matter. But in that regard, we will not be appointing anybody tonight to that. So as of tonight, there's two weeks, then I will share whatever additional resumes, CVs or bios, which is what we're requesting from an applicant with the rest of the board. We'll discuss it and the board will make that appointment. However, in the interim, I did speak to, to Rick and Rick has graciously agreed to step up and to be the chairperson for the fire commission. And you're satisfied with the pay and benefits? It meets your, meets what you need? Okay, good. So I'm gonna introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the village of Cornwall and Hudson's Board of Fire Commissioners comis- consists of three members, including a chairperson, which is currently a vacant position. And whereas the village of Cornwall and Hudson's Board of Trustees has identified Rick Giampolo as the candidate to fill that role of said chairman. And whereas the village board has determined that Rick Giampolo has sufficient experience in leadership, management, and fire and rescue services, and is beyond well-qualified to serve as chairman on the Board of Fire Commissioners as a retired F D N Y, um, fire marshal. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the village board hereby appoints Rick Giampolo as chairman for the village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners for a term commencing immediately and ending April first of two thousand and twenty-four. These terms are staggered by year. So his term will end, then Jeff's term will end, and then the next person we bring onto the Board of Fire Commissioners will end. They're staggered. So may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about this board appointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sir? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you and congratulations. All right. Moving on, next item. All right. The Savage Wonder Festival. All right, so give me some, give me a moment here because this one, um, do, 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 give me a second. Lot, da, 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 da. That, that's that. Okay. So I have spoken with no less conservative estimate, twenty-five people independently from Village Hall in regards to the Savage Wonder Festival. Some people were just curious. Some people raised concerns, which I thought were fair and legitimate. And some people were misinformed about what Vet Rep was seeking to do. I have received, one, which the board is in possession of, two, three, four sets of written comments. Now, they are all going to be added into the public record as written. I'm not going to read all of them. I have spoken about them in abridged versions. I read some of them. I have spoken, if not personally, on the telephone or face-to-face via email with the folks that took the time, and trust me, they took time to outline very valid concerns about, um, what Vet Rep is looking to do down at the Donahue Farm property. So the four that I have, um, one was supplied to me by Ms. Rupert, who's sitting in the back there, and it was very well-thought-out. And I've engaged with, with, uh, with her in regards to email responses to, to, not necessarily to satisfy you, but at least to give you, hey, this is what our, this is how we think that this could be handled. The next was from Mr. Joya, Rick Joya, who was a member of this board, a trustee emeritus, trustee ex officio, who raised also some concerns. Um, then I got one from Ms. Jackie. Um, I'm gonna butcher the name, and with a guy with a name like Galliano that gets butchered all the time, I hate doing this, but I think it's Skrzinski. Is it pronounced Skrinsky? So Ms. Skrzinski, again, from, uh, thirty-eight Idlewild Avenue, that sent me a very measured and, you know, thoughtful, um, hey, these are my concerns, how do you answer, answer this, this, and this? And I sent a response back on behalf of the board and said, you know, we've had Vet Rep in, everybody doesn't watch the meetings, they don't come or they don't watch it, but this is how these things could be handled. And then lastly, today, um, Barbara Smith Joya, um, Rick Joya's wife, who again, is a delight, I saw her this morning at Two Alice's. She sent an email, um, with a letter attached that she wanted to be, the board to be in possession of because of the, and I hate to use the term redundancy because that sounds pejorative, and it's not. But because the concerns are similar concerns, I'm not gonna read these letters. Um, we will make them available to the public, we will put them into the meeting minutes. And then lastly, um, I got a really, um, one, two, three, and change response back from Scenic Hudson. Now, I'll say this. If I had to do this all over again, I would have renegotiated the covenant with Scenic Hudson before we bought the Donahue Farm property. The covenant at Donahue Farm, in my, from my readings of it, is intended for the private sector purchase of the property and not a municipality. However, we share the same goals, aims, ecological preservationist. We share the same conservation, all the same things. We, we share those same things. It's just very difficult to move forward if the village believes that this is a good idea or a bad idea. The village board is the convening authority that decides, and it's a majority vote. If three of us decide yes, and two say no, or four side yes, one decides no, so long as it's a majority, that's how it's done. Now, Scenic Hudson came out and did a walk-around. Dan, who's on the, uh, Donahue Committee, thank you. Uh, Dave Work was not able to be there, Dan Poindexter was, which was a huge help. Dave Halverson, the guy who's responsible for mowing, not my meadows, but mowing the parts that can be mowed, um, taking care of the three, um, since the, the, the kennel is going to be razed in the spring, takes care of the ice house for us, takes care of the, the barn, and takes care of Mrs. Don Hughes', um, home, home there. Takes care of all those things, was there, um, as well as the deputy mayor, myself, and two representatives from Scenic Hudson. Now, I'm in awe of them and I'm in awe of their mission, what they do and what they protect, and their objectives. Um, and I got a letter back after we walked it, and Christopher Paul Meyer and the lovely Star were down there to say, here's what we're thinking, this is how we envision this will work. Scenic Hudson asked a ton of questions. The board, and you can see, I've been doing my homework by the highlighting on it. Um, the board is in receipt of this letter. Now, I'm not gonna read the entire letter to you tonight. It'll go into the record, it'll be entered into the record, it'll be made available, obviously to Scenic Hudson, it'll be made available to the public. But essentially, after you go through the, you know, the stuff in the beginning, the, the thank yous and the, it was great meeting and all that stuff. And they are our partners. They've allowed us in the spring to oil and chip the roadway in on the trailhead, which I thought was gonna be a, 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 a difficult road to hoe, to excuse the, uh, pun, but they've allowed us to do that. Um, and we're, they're working with us. Section two-point A of the conservation easement permits the use of the property for institutional purposes, including cultural, educational, charitable purposes. Another paragraph, but the line that matters. Therefore, this proposed use of the property appears to be consistent with the easement use requirements. Next paragraph, and I won't read the whole thing. Section three-point one-point B of the conservation easement prohibits commercial retail use of the property unless they're directly associated with certain permitted purposes, dot, 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 dot. Therefore, this proposed use of the property appears to be consistent with the easement use requirements. It goes on. And this, Chris, and this is something you and I and the board will talk about offline. The proposed use of the property appears to be consistent with the public access easement requirements. That was something that all four letters that I received and a number of people that stopped me at Cumberland Farms, at Pepatini's, or stopped me at Two Alice's, were concerned about. Will people have access to the trailhead? That is a non-starter with Scenic Hudson. If it is blocked or impaired or impeded or obstructed in any way. He's promised me that that is not gonna happen. Now, promises, I trust this guy will ensure that that happens. But that is the number-one thing that Scenic Hudson was concerned about. They said, so long as that can happen, it's consistent with the public easement requirements. The next thing, and Vet Rep, this falls on you. Scenic Hudson has concluded that these requirements regarding the conservation easement and the retention and preservation of the scenic and open character of the property, and to minimize the visibility of any new structures or improvements from State Route two-eighteen to Storm King State Park. They're concerned about new structures and improvements. Now, I went to talk to a local land use attorney who will remain nameless right now. I won't say it's a he or she. And thinks that temporary structures are not permanent structures. So if you put up a tent that's twenty feet high and the easement since eighteen for a building, they're, they're, they're not the same for something that's going to be a temporary thing. But having said that, Scenic Hudson has concluded that these requirements would include items such as the stages, tents, and portable toilets proposed for this event, and requested Vet Rep or the village provide an event staging plan, which I agree with them and Chris and I have talked about, and for this board to approve it. We're gonna vote tonight to go forward, contingent upon certain things, so long as we meet these things, for review so that we can ensure consistency with the foregoing requirements and the conservation easement purpose. I got three more to go. But Scenic Hudson's letter has a way to get to yes the way that I interpret it. You may think differently. Scenic Hudson also requests, and this is for you, Chris, and team, that Vet Rep or the village, which is means you, provide the design specifications for all festival structures and improvements so that we can ensure consistency with the foregoing requirements. Easy day. This is also Vet Rep. Section three-point two-point seven, the conservation easement requires any outdoor lighting, shall be directed solely within the property and focused in the direction of the ground. This is the Dark Skies Initiative that New York State, which I don't disagree with, which New York State- What's that? It is temporary lighting, Dave, but every effort that can be made so that you don't have the Klieg light that's pointed up into the sky, and that's a concern. Again, this will be something we will come to you and say, show us how this can be done. Okay, lastly, however, Scenic Hudson is concerned about the potential of a large gathering of people to result in impacts to the natural resources such as trash, soil compaction, erosion, and loss of vegetation. We therefore request that the village or Vet Rep, both of us, provide an event management plan and a post-event restoration plan in the event any damage should occur so that we can ensure consistency with the conservation easement purpose. And I agree. My philosophy here is we treat this like a national park because for the village of Cornwall and Hudson, it's a national park. If you use it, you leave it, whether you're the village or somebody else, an outside entity, you leave it in better condition than you found it. We also therefore request that you detail how the village will ensure, the village and Vet Rep will ensure protection of sensitive meadow habitats from any, and this is something Ms. Rupert and Ms. Smith Joya and Mr. Joya and maybe Ms. Skrzinski, all, all requested. The sensitive meadow habitats from any such potential impact in order to ensure consistency of the event with the conservation easement purpose. We walked it, we know what the mowed area is, we know where the meadows are. No one will be allowed to set foot on a thistle. And if they do, they'll be removed. And yes, we will have to work out any damages to the meadows. We have to figure out what, how we, how we make that whole again. And I don't know what that is. Is it, you know, is it a dollar amount? Is it a, I don't know what that is, and that's something that we've gotta work through. Next. It is our understanding that the event, including setup and takedown, will occur within a single calendar day. If this is act- inaccurate, we request you please let us know so we may review accordingly. It's in a single calendar day. Then pursuant to the requirements of sections port- four-point-one-zero and four-point-nine subsection B of the conservation easement, Scenic Hudson Inc. and the Scenic Hudson Land Trust, so S H L T Inc. must be named as additional insured parties for any insurance policy held by the village and indemnified, counselor, and held harmless for all costs, claims, and liabilities unless caused by the negligence of Scenic Hudson Land Trust. Scenic Hudson should also be named as an additional insurer for any insurance policy taken out by Vet Rep for this event, and included any indemnification, hold harmless agreement between the village and Vet Rep. Please advise us if we have misunderstood any representations made by the village or Vet Rep as this may affect our overall assessment. This is important. This letter does not express any opinion on the provo- proposed event's compliance with laws, regulations, and other government requirements, and we defer to the village to ensure that all such requirements are satisfied prior to permitting the event. That's it. So the concerns that people had, access to the trailhead, impact to the flora and fauna, to the delicate ecosystems that we have there. Now, I know that Vet Rep has suggested that they're gonna have between three to five thousand people there. I think that is the high end. Would we agree with that, the way, high end? And we're there an entire day from eight o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night. So that would be spread out in between. You'll prepare, and you've already given me the, the snippets of it. You'll prepare a transportation plan. We'll work with Chief Dixon to ensure that we have a good security plan. I don't know what that will look like right now, but as a guy that used to do that for a living, I can promise you that we'll make sure that we have one that, that, that works for down there. And then it's just gonna be a matter of holding you accountable for, you know, the agreements that we make in writing. So for tonight, counselor, the board has taken a straw poll in this. We knew that we could move forward because we knew we had enough ye votes. We're gonna pass a resolution saying the board is in support of allowing Vet Rep to move forward, contingent upon the fact that we're satisfied with the requirements for insurance, and we're, we're satisfied with the concerns being mitigated that have been raised regarding transportation, security, trash and refuse, noise, lights, and all those things. Am I right?
Yes, there's some language in, uh, a proposed resolution in the draft minutes that essentially incorporates most, most of the things that you just mentioned.
Should I just read it and keep it that simple?
Well, I, I-
Obviously, I went in much more detail, which is what we're going to expect, but for the purposes of tonight's vote, should I just read it the way you worded it?
Well, I tried, I, I tried to make it broad because we know, as we discussed, there'd be a, a transportation plan potentially, a, a, a safety plan. Obviously, it's something that the chief of police, Sue, Dave Halverson, likely, likely, the, you know, well, read it, it's, it's broad.
And then I'll see what the, what the board, if the board has any, um, input on that. I'm gonna introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Um, I'd like to propose a resolution to approve the Savage Wonder Festival of the Veterans Repertory Theater, subject to the applicant, submitting a site security plan, transportation plan, trash removal plan, and line comments. Um, and complying with the comments provided and guidance provided by Scenic Hudson, and pending final review and approval of the same by this village board. Is that fair?
You didn't say the date, you didn't say the date though.
They don't have a date yet, they said October. Do you have a date locked? What's the date?
Well, the date we proposed was October twelfth.
October twelfth, okay? For October twelfth, Saturday, Columbus weekend. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Gentlemen and gentle lady, are there, is there any discussion? Sir?
Yes. Uh, just by way of explaining my vote, which, uh, I will, spoiler alert, it's a, it's a no vote. But I wanna just make clear that, um, it reflects my opinion on the, uh, use of the property. It is not a comment on the application that's before us. I think that, you know, the, uh, the, uh, applicant has commendably addressed every single, uh, question and concern that people have raised, from impact to the meadow to every other aspect that we've gone through. Um, the, um, Scenic Hudson letter, I do, I share the mayor's sense that there is a definite path to yes through the, uh, Scenic Hudson, and that Vet Rep can conduct, uh, an event that is in keeping with the, with the conservation easement requirements. Um, it's really for me about, uh, scale and precedent. Um, and so the question is, so this is not the first time that I had been, this is the first formal time, but casually, people had suggested similarly large-scale events requiring, you know, similar kinds of trappings, meaning transportation plans, uh, you know, roped access to ticket holders and, you know, things like that. And I had, I had indicated my, um, my, uh, negative response to those. So essentially, my vote is a reflection of my opinion about the use of the property. And in general, I would not characterize myself as more, uh, conservative than Scenic Hudson when it comes to what's, uh, allowed to happen on the property. But in the case of, of, of something that's this size, that's, that's my concern. That said, and between now and October 12th, 2024, I will continue to vote against any such proposal that is of similar scale, but I anticipate that after October 12th, 2024, if I'm still on the board and asked to vote on another such proposal, that Vet Rep will have conducted an event that would allay my concerns about the use of the property for something of such scale. But that's it. In the meantime, I feel like that, that's where my vote is. And so that's just by way of explaining so that I don't just sit here and go, nay, and everybody wonders who I am. Reach that conclusion.
Well said, and I will say this, I appreciate the collegiality on this board. I think it is beyond exemplary where we can have spirited conversations, especially at work sessions, or one-on-one where most of the work of this board gets done, not here in public, and that we can do so in a manner that is respectful and we hear everybody out. And I have to say this, and Phil, just close your ears. If Vet Rep was not a Cornwall entity, I would be a no vote. And if somebody came to me and suggested that we return the fireworks, which the town is never going to allow to happen, to there, even though it was done there successfully in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, I would be a no vote. I don't think that's a place for it. I think Riverlight Park is perfect for it. But as I pointed out before, I've gone back to look at the minutes. Go back and look at the mid 90s minutes when people suggested we do something called River Fest. We've done it 25 years successfully, and in that 25 years, only two years it didn't occur, and that was the height of COVID. We've done it since 1998 successfully. I share Bill's feelings on this. Chris, you've got a huge yoke and a huge load here because anything goes wrong, nothing like this. I don't care who it is, Mrs. McGilligutti, who's been here since the Quakers or the Puritans, we're not going to say yes to that. I don't share Bill's feelings about precedence because I feel like this board and the next board, which will change in March, and then the following March, is the convening authority and makes those decisions. I understand his on scope and size and magnitude, and I, I, I believe there's a path forward to do that and make that work, but if it doesn't, Chris, we'll never have something else there, and you know that, so you know that this one has got to go off right. So I share Bill's feeling also that this is a, this will be a vote right now, and I'll see if anybody else wants to say anything. And then as this process goes along, we will continue to vote. We'll have to make sure that all those concerns that scenic Hudson has and the board has are met along the way. But I also understand that something of this magnitude, you need time to plan for it, you need a venue, and so long as we can move this forward, I will be a yea vote. So does anybody else want to weigh in on this before I, before I put up the motion and we do the official vote?
I don't have anything else to add.
Jimmy?
I've already, I've said this, I've said this the, at last week's meeting, and one is I support this cultural event that, that Chris and Vet Rep want to present, particularly because they're showcasing the talents of, of veterans. Two, I attended the first Savage Wonder Festival last year, and I was impressed how well-run, how well-managed it was. And I expect the same thing again this year, excuse me, next year. And the third thing is, from the, from the get-go, from once this was brought up to us, I think Vet Rep has been very responsive to all the questions that have been posed to them. They've addressed each one, and I expect Chris to be responsive to what scenic Hudson has already brought up and any other additional items that may occur. And based upon what I've seen before, I expect it to be very similar footprint and a great event, so I'm looking forward to it, and I'm glad you're bringing it to Cornwall and Hudson.
David?
We paid money for the property, and I know there's a needs covenant on it. I know there's a lot of covenants on it, probably too many for me. I was there when there was 8,000 to 10,000 people there and, and for the fireworks for many, many years, and the farm wasn't destroyed then. I don't think this is going to have an impact with the footprint that, that he's laid out, and I think we either, we own it, we can either use it or we can't use it. So that's the way I see it. I don't think the farm's as nice as it was when I was a kid, to be honest with you. I don't think the fields are as nice. I don't think it's as nice as it was for the kid, when I was a kid, except for the buildings, which we've improved. The Trailhead Road is, is useless as far as I'm concerned. You see the pictures of it right now? It needs a lot of work. The fields are only mowed once a year. I wish the fields were haved like they used to be. It didn't hurt them. It's just a ma- a matter of what you think is natural and what's not natural. When it was a farm, it was fine. I just think if we can't use it, then why did we buy it?
All right, thank you. So I'm going to say it one more time just to make sure I clarify this. I'm going to move to, to, to adopt a resolution to approve the Savage Wonder Festival for the date of Saturday, October 12th, between times to be later worked out and decided upon of the Veterans Repertory, I'm sorry, of Veterans Repertory Theater's Savage Wonder Festival, subject to the applicant submitting proof of insurance, site security plan, and Chris and I will sit down, we'll talk about exactly what that contains, because it's unfair to say, give me something, and you go, well, your interpretation is different than mine. I'll iron all that out. Transportation plan, trash removal plan, and comply with the comments provided by scenic Hudson, and then be subject to a final review and approval of the same by these village officials. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay. For one. Okay. All right, moving on. I am going to, we're going to approve the special event application for use of the firehouse. I'd like to make a motion, actually, before this. Chief, anything you want to say about the approval for Donna Brunel to use a firehouse for a private gathering on December 9th? Is this easy, okay, pro forma?
I, I don't know if the president has anything booked for that thing, but having that.
I'm assuming that Ms. Brunel probably squared it with the firehouse before she came to us, no? Okay, so I'm going to do this. I'm going to introduce a resolution and move for its adoption. Subject to approval from the firehouse, the village board can approve a special event application for Ms. Donna Brunel, B R U N E L L, to use the firehouse, Storm King Engine Number Two, for a private gathering on December 9th. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, next, I'm going to introduce a resolution and move for its adoption to approve the special event application for Winter Fest to use village property, namely our streets, roadways, and byways, and the bandstand area on December 3rd, subject to submission of proper insurance, a review by our code enforcement officer, and our police chief. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Michael, sewer credit. Dave, before I approve or make the motion to approve a sewer credit of $2,650 to account number 007941-000, do you want to give any background on that? Can one of you or both of you provide the board with the reasons why we are agreeing to do this?
Sorry about that.
And is that the amount? Because we discussed a different amount this morning, and this one looks like it's a bigger amount than what we discussed.
I'm sorry, what was the amount you had mentioned?
$2,650? I thought you said.
Yeah, that's too high.
That's too high. So what's the amount that you, you guys had come up with? And then explain to the board why we're doing this.
So the resident at number 18, Idrawal Park Drive, Mr. Ahern, he had reached out to us because he recently got a very high water bill, $5,858. He has an irrigation system on his house that had a leak. We looked, he happens to have a smart meter, so we were able to tell when he uses irrigation and whatnot. The leak contributed to an additional 200,000 gallons of water, and obviously, that does not go into the sewer system. The village has a policy of, if you can prove that the leaks don't go into the sewer system, that you'll entertain a request for a sewer relief. And in doing so, Dave and I spoke, and we recommend a relief of any amount of $2,041.08.
That's the number we talked about this morning at the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm good with that. Does any board member, before I make the motion, have any further questions? So Mike and Dave, obviously, Dave maintains our sewer system. The town handles sewage, but we maintain the sewer system. Mike is obviously the water superintendent. The two of them spoke, and they told me that that was a fair number to give a resident relief. As soon as they said that, I said, I'm in. So anything else to add? Mike, Dave?
It's not treated, it wasn't treated through the sewer plant, so we didn't actually pay for that to be treated.
Any trustee, you have any questions before I make the motion?
We've done it before.
Yep, we've done it, yeah. But we discussed every one of them, and this one seems reasonable. Okay, I'm going to make the motion to approve a sewer credit for the resident residing at, Mike, what's it again? Address?
18 Idrawal Park Drive.
18 Idrawal Park Drive, Mr. Ahern, in the amount of $2,041.08, and related to account number 007941-000. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All right, equipment purchase. All right, look alive, Michael.
Okay.
The, I'm going to make a motion to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. The board discussed this at length on last Monday's work session for the purchase of a Bobcat using uniform V as in Victor, three, four, X as in X-ray, L as in Lima, for $30,704.87, which is on the New York State government contract. Before I make that motion, Michael, anything to add on that? Anything to change from what your pitch was last Monday?
No, we, this will be replacing a, another unit that we currently have that's approximately 15 years old. That unit will be declared surplus when the new one arrives, and we expect that we may be able to get anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 back on a return on the surplus sale.
Okay. All right, I'm going to make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the trustees?
Couple points of information on that. The point he's making about the return on the used unit, the used units are very hard to come by, so the prices are jacked up now. So when you can buy something on state bid and then send that out to the real world to buy, the exchange is good. It's, and sometimes it's, it's the best time to do it because it's available now, and they're not always available.
Good point. Any further discussion? It's a track machine also, too, right, Mike?
No, we're not purchasing, the track machine, the price on it, we had some concerns about after speaking with the board.
So we told you that we're only doing this and one more.
Yeah, and, and we, even though that was on state contract, too, the price was still pretty high, so we're going to look at some different manufacturers.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five ayes. Okay, so we're not doing the, what is it called, Mike? The track what?
The mini track loader.
We're not doing the mini track loader. The only thing that we're left to do is the purchase of an HD that is a low-profile, power-tilt, deck-over bumper pull trailer for $13,566. May I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, the fee for the flow test. So I'm going to make a motion to pass a resolution to establish a $150 fee for flow testing that is requested by property owners for engineering purposes. Mike, before I move to adopt this, anything to add to it? I mean, the board's in agreement on this from the work session, but anything you can add to it? Any color?
Just to add some clarification, so this is, this comes up quite often when you have property owners that are looking to develop their property. They're looking to put sprinkler systems in. They need to do a fire flow test of the water mains that are out in front of the, in front of the property. To do so, we have to send two of our staff members over to perform that test, taking them away from their normal duties. Also, we're, I don't want to say we're wasting, but we're flowing water onto the streets, so there is a cost to that water that's flowing onto the streets during that test. So the $150 fee will help recoup some of those added costs that the general rate payer should be having to, to pay for.
All right, so I'm going to move to pass a resolution establishing the $150 fee for flow testing that is requested by property owners for engineering purposes. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
That's the norm, right, Mike? That's, we, we didn't just come up with this number.
Correct, that, that is correct. Our water system, we don't charge a lot of fees, so when things like this come up, they're surprised to hear that there is no fee attached to it. So we're, we're just bringing our system into the times with the water industry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I, to interject, that when somebody doesn't charge you a fee, it's always a bad idea to ask, why don't you charge me a fee?
Yeah, very true. You didn't ask for the homework to be turned in. Remember that kid? Remember that kid?
We could probably ask Manny what the going rate is.
I'm sure it's more expensive down in Rockland, right, Manny? What are they, 1,500?
And, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Joe.
I'm just, the, if this is not already, well, it sounds like it's not. It should be added to the villages' schedule of fees. I think that's the point of the resolution. But we should update the villagers' list of fees.
Okay. So Michael, what do you do? Write a line, send it to our code enforcement officer, who sends it to me?
Send it to the clerk, and the clerk can update the, the fee schedule.
We then adopt it at the reorg meeting.
Okay, and adopt it at the reorg?
No, you can adopt the fees anytime you want.
No, I'm saying, no, we can, we can adopt the fee now, but in the schedule.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the schedule.
Okay.
So Joe, what do you do in the meantime?
Well, you just approve the fee now. I guess if you want to do it formally at reorg, you'll just, yeah.
We usually adopt what, what the fees are for the upcoming year.
All right. All right, next item is the municipal cooperation resolution to approve NY class. So whereas New York General Municipal Article 5-G, Section 119O, Section 119O empowers municipal corporations defined in Article 5-G, Section 119N, to include school districts, boards of cooperative educational services, counties, cities, towns, excuse me, and villages and districts, to enter into, amend, cancel, and terminate agreements for the performance among themselves or one for the other of their respective functions, powers, and duties on a cooperative or contract basis. Whereas, wow, excuse me, whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson wishes to invest portions of its available investment funds in cooperation with other corporations and/or districts pursuant to the NY class municipal cooperation agreement amended and restated as of March 28, 2019. And whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson wishes to satisfy the safety and liquidity needs of their funds, now therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows, that Doris Wickizer, village clerk of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, is hereby authorized to participate in the NY class program under the terms of the NY class municipal cooperation agreement amended and restated as of March 28, 2019. Now, what does that mean? So the village does business with two separate banks. This would give us the, the ability, and the audit is shortly to be forthcoming so that village residents can see that we were audited this year. We get audited every two years, so the next audit will be in 2025. Every year, the village has a compilation done. So the village is sitting on a fund balance. You might have heard the talk of fund balance in the town because it's been a major issue there in regards to what their fund balance is. There's a fund balance, and then there's an available fund balance. What is an available fund balance? It means monies that are unallocated, which means it's just our rainy day fund. In the village, we're sitting on a unallocated, available fund balance of around $2.6 million. We have a $7 million budget, and we are well over the 20% that, of next year's budget in unallocated fund balance that New York State's comptroller argues you should have. The town's at 10%. They're working to get back to 20%, and they're debating and fighting about, not fighting, but they're arguing about, about how much should be in their fund balance. So while we're sitting on this, which is a rainy day fund, because if a water main breaks somewhere, where does it come from? Well, we have a water fund, that's true, but our major things that the village is in charge of, we have money that we're blessed to have now because we're not in a period of austerity to be able to do things with. Well, do we want it to sit and bring us 2% interest, 3% interest, or 8% interest? And I'm using those as arbitrary numbers, but the purpose of this is to allow us to invest with other municipalities, almost in such, something like a profit-sharing type of thing. Our money's protected. We're not putting it in the stock market. We're not doing things that are reckless or dangerous, but it allows us to get more return on our money than the 2%, 3%, or 4% that a bank may be inclined to pay you to keep it as savings. That's what it's about. So with that in mind, I'm going to make this motion for us to adopt that resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Well, I'm sorry, discussion, just to explain my vote on this one. I, unfortunately, I, I had just learned of this as a, as an option that we were considering last week, and I'm just not familiar enough with the, any implications of allowing our funds to go into a different type of institution, and just not knowing the, the details of how this operates. And, you know, I don't have any suspicions or anything like that, simply that I can't, with authority, vote yes on it just because I'm not really clear. on the way it differs from an insured bank account or any of the other things that we, you know.
Fair point, and before you say where you're gonna go with it, so there's two places that we have our money. Chase Bank and Orange County Bank and Trust. So this would be a third place for us to be able to deposit money. Doris, am I missing anything from the class that you had on it in regards to the purposes, or how it would be?
It's FDIC insured, and it's, um, other municipalities, it's only open to municipalities, so other municipalities have it as well.
Well, and while I've got you, uh, the types of assets or equities or stocks, what, what are the vehicles that they invest in?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I think it's all of the above, I think they probably do, yeah, but I mean...
It's like a mutual fund, I, this is the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, and the reason I...
Perspective, do you?
Yeah, I kinda do.
I think, I think, though, um, this doesn't require us to invest, this just gives us the opportunity to.
Understood.
Yes.
But we don't vote separately on the decision-making around whether to invest, correct? I mean, we...
Well, we don't, we don't...
This allows us to participate, but then, the board doesn't then vote again if we decide to put money in.
Well, that's not...
Correct.
Go ahead.
But, wait, Doris, so if the board decided to move X amount of dollars into something, who makes that determination? Not the treasurer, is it?
The treasurer.
The treasurer makes that determination?
And it, it can go in and come out within a day, like, you can put money in one day and take it out the next day.
Right, but what, wouldn't there be guidance coming from the board that, hey, we're comfortable doing that? I mean, in working with the, the treasurer to, to do that?
Well, we can make it that.
Well, we can make it that way.
We can make a contingent or subject to the treasurer coming to the board, requesting approval of the board to transfer funds into New York class for the purposes of investment, so...
I think that makes perfect sense. And then we find out we can't do that, we'll go back and relook at it, but I would be a vote yes with the caveat that the board has a weigh-in on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think once, once we get some experience with it, I mean, I, look, I wouldn't expect Doris to say, you know, to, to take, let's, I'm just using as, you as the treasurer, okay, let me take, you know, five-hundred-thousand dollars, I'm gonna invest it without us, without the board knowing. So, that's why I'm saying, like, look, it's an opportunity, we're not wedded to it. I think we make it subject to any investment that's gonna be made, um, that it gets, it gets approval by the board. Now, down the line, we can, we can make adjustments to that, just as we do for when we sign off on expenditures. You know, if it's over a certain, if it's over a certain amount, you have to come before the board. If it's under a certain amount, then the treasurer can do it.
I agree.
Do you have any familiar, familiarity with this, Joe?
No, I haven't seen the cooperation agreement, so I, I can't really opine, Dave.
I just thought maybe with another municipality, you may have some.
So then I'm gonna propose that the board vote to, to make this available to the village subject to any deposits or investments, um, at least, at least on the first iteration being run through the board, correct?
Yes, yes.
I mean...
Plus, Jim, would we ask Nugent and Hassler to weigh in on this?
He, he has.
Oh, yeah. No, he's set.
He's, he's all for it, he thinks it's a good idea, and he could met the village...
A while ago.
An excessive, I mean, he gave us amount that we're losing because we're not using it.
And other municipalities are, so...
Yes.
All right? So do we wanna pass approval to use this subject to the board finding out how monies are, how monies are moved into this account? And I'm happy to get with the treasurer and report back to you as soon as she starts next Monday.
Yeah, or get with the book, the Nugent and Hassler, I would say.
Yeah.
It's a phone call away.
I would, I would, my, my, what would allow me to vote yes is, um, if we passed a resolution that said we authorize the village to, uh, enter into the agreement with the stipulation that the village board votes on, um, initial deposits of any kind that are made into this account.
And processes and protocols going forward for how deposits are made or investments are made?
Right, that we have, we have approval of the actual deposit, the first, at least the first one.
Anybody in disagreement with that?
No, that's right.
Bill, make the motion. Can you make the motion?
All right. I, uh, I, uh, I hereby move that, as, as read previously by the mayor, that Doris Wickizer, the, uh, village clerk of Cornwall and Hudson, is hereby authorized to participate in the New York class program under the terms of the New York class municipal cooperation agreement amended and restated as of March twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, with the further stipulation that the village board of Cornwall and Hudson shall vote, uh, to approve or not approve any specific initial, uh, deposit of funds into the New York class program.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so moving forward, we have the resolution for a public hearing to narrow Shore Road, and I guess the follow-up to that, Joe, is the resolution for the village board to schedule a public hearing to amend Village Code Section one-five-five dash four-eight concerning parking on Shore Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we should do them in that one.
Can I do this really quickly and just say, as per document, and explain to the board that this is related to the ongoing negotiations that we have had going on now for upward of two years with the Cornwall Yacht Club regarding the patch or portion of Shore Road from the bottom of Dock Hill Road, just slightly south to where the village historical Cornwall Landing Church is, and the Cornwall Yacht Club property beyond that, that stretch of Shore Road that ends two-hundred, three-hundred yards down the road. The village has maintained that it is a village road. Um, the village has never, ever acceded or conceded that property to anyone else, and what this resolution does is it allows the road to technically be narrowed to what, Joe? We're narrowing it to a...
Well, I don't, we, the village did have a survey performed, uh, there's a proposal for very specific, uh, meets and bounds of the road.
Gotcha.
What those are, I couldn't tell you, but we have discussed it, it's in writing. So these two resolutions taken together, just, I'll, I'll try to do it quickly, but just to back up. So there's a, there's a question, or at least, the yacht club's raised a, a concern or dispute as to whether it's a public road or not, and how wide the public area is that the public can actually traverse across the road. To resolve it, we had a survey done, we have an agreement as to what we can both accept as to the width of the road, the length of the road, and what is outside that width and length of the road would then enable an area for parking, because right now, there is no parking on Shore Road. So these two things taken together, uh, there is, uh, is to try to resolve this. So the, the village law, New York State village law, has a provision to both expand roads and narrow roads. So the idea would be to have a public hearing, uh, give the board's comments, get the public's comments as to just slicing off a little bit of Shore Road, so to speak, um, which would then lead to the, if that, if that is approved, you would be in a position as well to adopt an amendment to our no-parking provisions that would, in that carved-out space, would allow parking. So the, the two public hearings and the two resolutions taken together is a step-one, step-two approach to try to resolve this ongoing dispute, for lack of a better term.
That's what it is, and this all because CSX, the railroad, the railway, has a, has a, um, what do you call it, a, um, an easement from the center line of the railroad tracks twenty-five feet in either directions on village property. So that allows them to enter into a relationship, an agreement, a lease agreement, with the yacht club, for the yacht club to park on a road that we own, and that is a no-parking road. So by doing this narrowing, we still own the roadway. We're not narrowing the roadway, but it allows them to use the portion to the east of Shore Road for yacht club parking. I think that covers it, correct, Joe?
Very, very close.
Okay, what did I miss?
We, we do own the road, we don't own the road property under the road.
The roadway.
We own the macadam, we own the right and the public's right to traverse it.
All right.
I don't wanna be, I, I don't wanna get bogged down.
So I'm gonna do this quickly, so I'm not gonna read this whole thing.
Right.
So, for the resolution of the village board to schedule a public hearing to Narrow Shore Road, as per document, I'm gonna move that the village approves this resolution to schedule a public hearing for Monday, December eighteenth, at seven-twelve PM, on or about seven-twelve PM, in order to discuss, um, the narrowing of the village road known as Shore Road at the southern end. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, the corollary to this, or the, the next one, is the resolution for scheduling a public hearing to amend Village Code Section one-five-five dash four-eight concerning parking on Shore Road. I'm going to move that, um, this be entered as per document and move that the board approves this resolution concerning parking along Shore Road and scheduling a public hearing to be scheduled for December eighteenth, Monday, at three-two-five Hudson Street, uh, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one-two-five-two-zero, in the Edward C. Moulton Jr., um, boardroom at seven, um, twenty PM, on or about. May I have a second? Why is it December nineteenth? It's the eighteenth, it's the eleventh and the eighteenth. It's the eleventh and the eighteenth. All right, it is the eighteenth, I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident. Thank, okay, all right, on the eighteenth, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, all right.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just, just so the board is aware, I am preparing, uh, the short environmental assessment form for the public hearing on the road narrowing, and I'll also be providing the board with a draft local law, uh, for them, for you to review. So should the road be narrowed, you'd be in a position to also adopt an amendment to our no-parking provisions on December eighteenth. Um, I'm get, I'll get, be getting those to you shortly.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to other business, um, so, these should go...
Workers' comp, on, or no?
So, as you all know, the village board and the town council are working together. Of course, the town is waiting on the village to get this document to them first, but we're working on an IMA. The village has provided water to the town since on or about eighteen ninety-nine, Mike? Ninety-five, eighteen ninety-five, we were incorporated in eighteen eighty-four, and we were already delivering quality, drinkable water by eighteen ninety-five, in the space of eleven years. That's pretty damn good. So we're working on, um, this intermunicipal agreement. Believe it or not, and we now have a records management clerk can actually research these things now. She went back to the minutes, there's never been an IMA between the village and the town. There has to be one. Um, it's gonna be very short, it's gonna be very sweet, it's gonna be very succinct, and basically, we're leaving money on the table by, by not being able to apply for grants, because when we apply for grants, we can only take the three thousand in-state consumers into account for those instead of the sixteen thousand combining the greater Cornwall area. So we're working on it, it's gonna be bare bones, it's just basically gonna say that we're gonna deliver water to them. Joe drafted one up, Mike Trainer has added and tweaked, and I've looked at that, Joe's gonna put that all together, give it back to me, I'm gonna add a couple of small tweaks to it, and then share it with the board.
And I already revised the document and recirculated it this afternoon. It incorporates Mike's comments. So now the board has a clean, fresh, revised draft that it can take a look at.
Awesome, um, believe it or not, the sewer agreement, the IMA between the village and the town, was last constructed in nineteen sixty-seven. The town council looked at it in nineteen sixty-nine, and then the town and the village were required by code in the town to discuss it every eighteen months. Having done it as long as I've been here, and I've talked to former mayors, we haven't done it under their watch either, so this is something that I know Josh and the town council are looking at on the sewer side to make sure that we have an intermunicipal agreement. So we'll handle water, they'll handle that, okay. EV char, uh, fire commission vacancy, we already spoke about at the top of the meeting, or, we're up in resolutions. EV charging station, trustee Brain is working on that for us, and we're moving in the direction, the town had put two stations in up at Town Hall, and Bill is working on getting us in that direction.
Nothing new, except, do I have, did this, you drop a sample, sample agreement? Yeah, thank you very much.
Good.
No new contacts with, um, uh, vendors or providers?
We're looking to provide EV charging stations at Village Hall, at the municipal, um, lot behind the bandstand, and down at Donnie Memorial Park. All right, next item of business, Cornwall Yacht Club lease of village property, um, at Donnie Memorial Pro-, uh, um, Donnie Memorial Park. So this is something that we are waiting to hear back from them. Um, they have received a certified letter from me on behalf of the board suggesting that we would like to discuss their contract with the village that was signed in nineteen eighty-six for four twenty-five-year consecutive leases that only they are allowed to break or request a change to, and the village board had the property appraised, and we are gonna seek fair market value for it, so, um, stay tuned.
And, and just to, just to clarify, so I have been in communication with the yacht club's attorney. We had mentioned, I think, around the, the work session, that they were looking for a, a copy of our appraisal. Uh, I got a follow-up already since last week from the yacht club's attorney, so I still don't have a copy, so if somebody could get that to me...
Doris is gonna get that to, she sent it to Dave, right, to Dave Decker?
I, I, I sent out the copy of the appraisal this evening.
Thank you.
So the yacht club is requesting that the appraisal that we paid for, that we share that with their attorneys, which, again, Joe and I spoke about that, and, I mean, unless anybody on the board feels that that is...
An attachment of a bill on it.
Well, I mean, i- is it, is it something that, you know, it's...
We'll get it back, when we get, when we get fair market very close, or close to it, so...
That is true.
Yes, sometime, I mean, s- sometimes, under certain circumstances, the village would not release an appraisal. For instance, if you were purchasing a piece of property, because you wouldn't want that out there and it might affect the price. That's not this situation, and it's likely foilable anyway.
There you go.
Um, so, once I get the document, I'll just review it, I, I would imagine that there shouldn't be any, any confidential matters in there. If, if there are, we can redact it, but I, um, to, to, to get the issue started, I mean, we have to start somewhere, we'll get that to them.
And again, the village in the last two years has entered into an agreement with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum, and we charged them money to operate on village property, even though that property was gifted to the village by the Stillman family, and even though the Hudson Highland Nature Museum is a not-for-profit and provides services to the village and everyone else. We've also done the same with, you know, on the Donnie Farm property. We charged the person that grew up there in that house, we charged them fair market value to live there. So, um, it's just, it is what we're doing. We're just seeking to get fair market value for a piece of a hundred-and-fifty-foot of prime Hudson River waterfront and just get fair market value for it. So I don't have a problem so long as the board does, and as so long as council says that, look, they're entitled to it, then we paid for the, uh, appraisal, we'll share it with them, and at least that'll give us a place to sit down and talk, but I just don't want this to drag on after the holidays. I wanna sit down with them, Joe, so you know my intent before Christmas.
Okay, yeah, so, so...
Stuff to do when I sent the certified letter to them a month ago?
Well, no, but, but just so the board is aware, the communication that we received is that council is asking for us to give some explanation as to why we think it may not be a proper lease under certain provisions of state law. So, um, my associate, Dave Decker, is working on that, so...
You're confident and comfortable with the fact that a lease agreement with a private entity for a hundred years is not in the best public interest of a municipality?
It, it seems pretty self-evident, right? So, uh, you know, we're trying, I'm trying, you know, in, rather than get bogged down in it, we'll, we're working on a response.
Got it.
The idea would be to have these two public hearings in December and try to resolve the road issue before the end of the year. I will make it known to them that you wanna meet before Christmas to do this, that gives us three weeks or so or more. I mean, that should be, that should, that should be enough.
And also, you know, and again, if we knit together this road issue, which is great, 'cause this has been ongoing, the sign that they have there that says, "No tre-" 'cause this has been ongoing, the sign that they have there that says no trespassing, that is part of this agreement with them, right? Even if it's a handshake deal that you work out with their attorney, that it can't say no trespassing to confuse people as they try to drive down Shore Road and see it and think that they're not allowed to go past that sign.
It is something that has been discussed ad nauseam.
Alright.
And it will be, it's, it's a critical part. It it absolutely is, there's, there's no, no doubt about it.
Okay. Alright, just as long as you're on it. Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, next item is proposed, we already talked about the files thing, I think, when Mr., uh, I don't think we need to go back into that when Mr. Land was here. Oh, where was Perm, I did?
We all caught it, we didn't.
Maybe we can do it on, in December.
Okay, perfect, that's fine. Alright, um and 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 lastly, this is tied, this is tied in for water, and this is important. So, I watched the town council meeting last week, and every year I watch the town council meeting when they deny the request for the village, request to waive property taxes and school taxes as a result of that, and exempt our properties that are in the town. We pay around $200,000 a year. Now granted, a chunk of that, the big chunk is the school taxes, but if the town owns the property, the town wouldn't have to pay property tax to themselves, and they could waive the school taxes and not have to do it. But every year, and they didn't vote on it last week, but I, I listened to the discussion amongst the council, and they're gonna do the same thing they do every year, and they're gonna deny our request for a waiver. So, what I asked the water superintendent to do for me was to calculate, since the town uh residents are paying far below what our code says, which is 80% above village water rates, and they only pay 33% above village water rates, is what would be the difference to cover that approximately $200,000? Now, we in the village pay $12 per 1,000 gallons, the town pays $16 per 1,000 gallons, that's a 33% difference, when it should be 80. Okay. How, I don't wanna try to take them back to 80%, I think right now it'd be draconian, and I, it would be wrong to do that to Mrs. McGillicuddy, who's on a fixed income, and all of a sudden to jack it up, or to do it across two or three years, it would be considerable. What I do want is, I want the monies that we are committed to paying for property and school taxes on properties in the town that we own, that we own, and treat water for the school district and treat water for town residents, I want that $200,000 back. And there's a way to do it. We raise the town rates 92 cents per 1,000 gallons. So instead of being $16, there'll be $16 and 92 cents. Mike, um Dave's asking about it, there, there's a rate where we're allowed, for what we sell to other communities, we only have a rate for the village and the town. School properties that are in the town pay the town rate. School properties that are in the village pay the village rate. Now, if the village board was deigning to sell water to another municipality, we can set whatever rate we want and change the code. So we could sell it for $10 a 1,000 gallons, or $100 per 1,000 gallons. But as of right now, it's 12 and 16, and if we raise it 92 cents, or let's just call it a dollar to be even, that's not breaking anybody's bank. And then every year, the town can continue to go through, and they can deny our request for a waiver, and we'll get that $200,000 to pay that in water levies. So, that's what I'm gonna offer to the board. I wanna do a little bit more work on this, I'm gonna continue to negotiate with my colleague in the town, the supervisor, and then I'm gonna propose this going into this next budget and going into reorg, that we raise the rates 92 cents or a dollar for town residents.
Just to Dave's question, is there another rate?
There's no other rates, we, we.
So there's, the, the code states that the water users outside the village boundaries will be charged 80% more than those that reside inside village boundaries. It makes no distinction whether you're a town resident, commercial property, contractor.
So there's no commercial rate?
Correct, because, because the village also has, the village also has an IMA with the town of New Windsor to supply water to the New Windsor Consolidated Water District that's never been acted upon. So if we were to sell water to them for whatever reason, it would be at the same rate.
Now, if we were to to go into a deal with another municipality, the board could come up with and vote on a rate, because if you're selling water wholesale to another community, you're not gonna sell it to them at retail rates, even though our code suggests 80% over what the village's, to anybody.
I think the superintendent is pointing out, we would have to change the code to enable that, uh because.
Correct.
Right now, it's in the village, outside the village.
Right.
Everywhere, not just the town outside the village.
Oh, yeah.
You would have to change the code.
Yeah, but we're only selling it right now to the town. And and that includes the school districts.
Correct.
So, yeah, so the school district would end up paying.
But we also sell it to um contractors who come in and have projects, like the Route 9W overpass.
Right.
They were purchasing water from us.
So they've been under charge as well, Mike, right?
The water line?
No, they were paying the 80%.
The water line hooked down?
Now they're paying the 80%?
The contractors.
Contractors.
Correct.
Oh, so there, so there is.
No.
Essentially.
No, we were following the village code.
But the village code says 80%.
Correct.
But we're only charging the town 33%.
Town residents.
Town residents. But we're charging everybody else on the outside, meaning contractors essentially.
The board makes the rates.
80%.
But there's not that many.
But the board, well, the board made the rate for the town, but we're not charging them that.
Correct.
Mike, you're not helping right now.
But no, when, when, when con, when contractors come in, when contractors come in, whether they be Denunzio that's putting in the water pipe.
Whoever it is.
They get, they get charged what the village code says.
Right, which is 80%.
If the village chooses to charge town residents a different rate, that's up to the village board.
Okay, got it. So, so to your point, it won't affect anything except for town residents.
I guess what Mike is saying is that the code sets the price, but the schedule of fees that we adopted at the reorg sets the village, the town residential uh cost.
We said we charging, we're charging just the town more. The, the code says.
Everybody, including the town.
Correct. That's, and that's what I'm getting at, the code does not make a distinction between town of Cornwall residents or anybody else.
Alright, so trustees, think about this, because this is what I'm going to move to do absent something that comes from the town, change my mind. And as of right now, I think this would be one way to do this, which again, not hurting people and taking it to the 80% that it should be, but moving it in an incremental, tiny fashion to cover the amount that the town refuses to weigh.
If I might though, I would suggest that the village board consider changing the code to remove the 80% and just leave it to the discretion of the village board to set the rates.
Absolutely, Mike, 'cause that code's been on the books, and it just has not been on.
Adhere to.
Adhere to, better word. Okay, that's that.
And, and?
And?
And? Perhaps, before the village takes any formal step to modify the water rate, we should actually have the sewer IMA in place. We don't want this little, you know, back and forth suit, I don't expect it, I'm, I'm just saying.
I, I don't either, because anything that we do is not for retribution purposes.
No, I, I, of course.
And it's not to hurt people, it's, hey, in response to this pro forma denial every year, this is gonna cover it, and that's what we're gonna do.
And I, and I compliment the board for taking on this Goliath, because this is something that has been an ongoing issue for a long time, difficult to resolve.
Yep.
But it's, you know, the, the town, the town's coming to the table, and you're coming to the table, and, you know, try to, because it's really just to try to balance out the expenses.
And I, and I don't, it is, it is just that. And remember, I don't know if you're here for that meeting or not, but where I pulled out the September, and I, don't quote me on the date, 1974 meeting where Doc Donahue sat here, well, he was in a different place, but Doc Donahue and his board voted 5-0 to raise the town's rates to 80% over in response to the fact, we don't know what the numbers were. And again, we don't know why 80% was seized upon. Was there a direct correlation between that and what the town was charging, property taxes and school taxes? Or was this situation where they said, well, the heck with it, we'll do 80%? We don't know, and we haven't been able, Mike and I scratched our head, we've looked at it, crunched numbers, can't come up with the reason why it went to that. So I'm not suggesting that we go back to what it's supposed to be by code, because no one can convince us yet that there's a reason it should be 80, but by the same token, we go through this game every year of making this appeal, killing trees to print the paper, to send the paperwork over there to make this appeal, and it's denied, then let's just do it so we don't have to appeal anymore.
And this village board finds itself in the same place that a lot of other boards find themselves as well. In a lot of communities that I represent, and communities in Orange County, when one municipality has infrastructure in another town and requests an exemption, very often it's routinely denied. As a matter of fact, I filed a brief in the second department today on this issue.
Yeah, and I get that, and Joe, you and I have had many conversations about this, but I don't understand why. If someone can help me understand why there wouldn't be a waiver, and I, I don't like to hear, well, Jim, that would open up the door for other municipalities.
Well, I can get, I can give you the legal answer.
I know the legal answer, you, you shared that with me, but I'm just saying, I don't understand.
Share it with me.
Did you do it enough?
What is something?
I'm sorry, the rector, I'm sorry.
He only meet twice a month.
That's right.
Has to happen.
Yes.
And and Joe, if I could ju, just to point out, and all due respect to your brief and everything, the, the.
You didn't see my brief.
The, the main difference between our community and the town is we actually maintain the water mains and provide water to the town. Whereas, a lot, a lot of the other systems, the, the, the infrastructure is just a pass through, it does not provide water.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, alright, got it, we got some time on that, I'll continue to research it, and I'll make sure the board, we engage on this, because that is my solution. Is it gonna be the solution? I don't know, but that is my solution, so know what I'm thinking, or what I'm thinking about. Alright, moving on to, for your information, planning board meeting scheduled for November 21st at 7:00 PM right here. Thanksgiving, village offices will be closed this Thursday and this Friday, November 23rd and November 24th, and for everybody, please have a great Thanksgiving. I think we're getting some weather coming in, and they're talking about crazy travel numbers, so if you're traveling, just be careful. It's a very dangerous weekend to travel um on the highways, because, you know.
Weather that you're not permitted to speak aloud about, or other types of weather? There's a ban on an S-word.
No, I don't think so, I think, I was hearing, yeah, no, yeah, I'm not gonna use the S-word here.
Alright.
Um Winterfest, as was approved tonight, is going to be December 3rd. I believe 5:45 is going to be the tree lighting in town. During the day in the town is where they're gonna have a bunch of youth activities, of Corn, Phyllis is nodding, so I feel good going ahead. Cornwall Youth Committee's gonna do events, then they're gonna have some type of small parade coming down. No parade, I'm sorry. You're gonna end up down in the village, and that's where there'll be festivities down here, and we'll do the tree lighting here, probably sometime around 6:30? Well, he said 5:45 in town.
It's an exact time, so.
Okay.
It's not a doubt.
Yeah, it's, it's an exact time. I thought it was 6:30, but I could, I'll double check. Okay, the menorah lighting, um I'm just gonna say this, at this, this year is probably more so than any that we should be standing with our Jewish neighbors, friends, residents, um families, um and the menorah lighting is scheduled for December 7th, which is the first night of Hanukkah. The village will have its typical tree lighting on December 3rd, and on December 7th, we will have the lighting for the first night of Hanukkah of our traditional menorah at uh, at the bandstand. And I would just encourage people, like you said, if there was any time to stand with our Jewish neighbors, it's this year. So, December 7th, 5:00 PM. Phyllis, I think, um I heard yours the other night, is it gonna be the same thing, the first night of Hanukkah? You know what time yours is in the town? I think it's gonna be after that, but ours is at 5 o'clock. Um work session is scheduled for Monday, December 11th at 7:00 PM right here. The zoning board meeting is December 14th at 7:00 PM right here, and the next village board business meeting, where we have three public hearings scheduled, is scheduled for December 18th at 7:00 PM. And with that said, um. Public comment first, or board comments? Public comment, right? Okay, public comment, yes ma'am, um please step up to the podium, state your name and your um, your residence, and you have three minutes to address the board. Good to see you, by the way.
Barbara Gazza. I have to comment.
What's your residence? I know you live in Homeland, what's your residence?
19 Homeland.
19 Homeland.
Um I have to comment about the water rates. Um, the water department, in my opinion, should be run as a business, and for the reasons that the superintendent just stated. And as far as, you know, um when emotions come into it, and you get, oh, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna upset somebody's budget, you know, this would be a, a significant increase um from 30% to 80. Doesn't have to happen just, oh, you know, overnight. If we did it over five years, but the water department obviously needs money, we have it on, we shoulder the repairs, we, we have all the responsibility, weekends, whatever happens, it falls on our superintendent and our board. So, you know, it's fine to say, well, you know, we, we don't wanna um go after the town, you know, for the water rates, but um let, what happens with the sewer? I'm paying a sewer increment every mon, every bill, and because we don't know what will come down with the sewer system. So, you know, um it, it kind of all um falls under the same areas. And, and as far as, you know, um, um, the responsibility for it, all of those reasons just justify. And you know what it also comes down to is, the code is the code is the code. We always say, you gotta do this because it's the code. Well, you know what? We have a code that we've been ignoring. Live by the code, that's what, that's what we're all supposed to do, right? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Yes, um I, 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 I agree, and I hear you, but the code was abridged during Mayor Moulton's tenure. The code was abridged and changed, not legally, but because the mayor put a budget forward under the Gross Administration, very incrementally. And then the code was hugely changed under the Mayor Coyne administration. So it went from 80 to 79 to 70, to 64 to 45, to 38 to 33, and it happened under different, and every mayor probably, and every board had different reasons, but I agree with what you're saying, that it's the code, but I also need to understand why the code is that. If the code is out of whack, then this board should say, doesn't make any sense anymore. And if it does make sense, then yes, there's gotta be a way to increase it, but I, no one has been able to show me why 80%, why they should be paying that much um more than we do. I understand what you're saying about maintaining the system, I think you wanna say something.
I just wanna say this, is that the water committee's been meeting for months, going over various things. We're gonna be coming out a report, Mike is drafting most of it, almost all of it, and, and um at a macro level, one of the things we're gonna be um guiding the village toward, and that is looking at the rate structure, alright? Comparing it to, we, we've compared it to other, other municipalities, so that's something Phase 2 of the water committee, I would say, would be addressing that. So, um we, 'cause we need, it needs to be updated. You've already pointed out that we don't know why we, they came up with that number. Phase 2 is, let's tackle the water rate waters, the water rate structure.
Okay. Alright, anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Murphy.
I have three minutes, and I'm gonna say three different things. First, my name is Phyllis Murphy.
Where do you live?
I happily live in the village of Cornwall, at 212 Bayview Avenue, and I mean that, love where I live.
She's writing it down. I don't know why.
I also work for the town of Cornwall as an activities coordinator.
That's your disclaimer.
I wear many hats, I love, love, love my job. I'm very blessed to have it, and I'm, with blessings comes gratefulness, and that's where I need to talk to the police, and, and Charlie, and Mike.
What about Dave?
And Dave.
And Manny?
And everybody. Um, two things. One, um October 21st was Mission 31 for the honor flight that I had the privilege to be a. a part of. I was a guardian for somebody, a Vietnam vet, and I can't tell you guys, Mike, the ambulance crew, the police, everybody, what it meant to be there when they came back from Washington DC and got off the plane at Stewart Airport, and everybody was there at 9 o'clock welcoming them home, especially the Vietnam veterans who really weren't welcomed home. And the fact that you were all there, and the energy was amazing, it was amazing, and everybody was welcomed back, and thank you for your service, and I just want to say, thank you guys for doing that, because I had the pleasure to be there and witness it. That was October 21st, Mission 31. October 27th, I had to call 911 from my own home, and what a welcome relief. Four minutes later, you guys showed up, Charlie, the smiling faces, the helping hands, I can't tell you what it meant to me to see you guys at my house to help us. And you did, and it was great, and everything worked out. Again, EMS, thank you. Chief Dixon, your police officer was amazing. I do forget his name, but I know his face. The next, the next day, he came to my house, knocked on my door, and asked me how everything was and if I was okay. I don't forget that. So, thank you. So, we do live in a grateful, I mean, we do live in a great place, and I'm very grateful, and it doesn't go unnoticed by me. Now, Vet Rep. So, I started with Donahue Farm Committee, I had to fill out an application that was longer than my college education, my college application, and I was picked to do events, because I have a specialty in that, and I do, and I'm proud of it. Working with Vet Rep and going to their shows, I have gotten to know them. They are the most amazing people, they are professional, and they do what they say, and they say what they mean. So, I believe it's going to be a great, great event. I am part of the event committee, but for them and for Donahue Farm. One of the things that we had was a survey, and the three things on the survey, one of them was the garden, the community garden, and we did that, and the other one was people want events. They don't maybe want full-blown events constantly, but they were open to having events, and now we're going to provide a really good one. So, I don't think anybody should be overly concerned, though I read this, and I do understand it also, but I will be at that event to make sure that whatever you guys come up with, and whatever rules that have to be followed while everything's going on and all the chaos and all the, you know, fun stuff, I will be there to make sure that these things are being followed, because that's what I do. I'm an event planner, I take it seriously, and again, I love what I do. So, thank you, I appreciate it, and I'm just so happy. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you. You sat through the entire meeting, I should have just had you on the...
My husband will be proud, I didn't open my mouth for two hours.
Well, no, no. There was one...
There was one outburst. All right, thank you, Phyllis, thank you for that. Anybody else for public comment? Nope, seeing none, I'm going to go around the board. Trustee Paleyoda, anything to add?
Well, in thinking about the Savage Wonder Festival, my takeaways are that it's 18 years and older. I think that that, that in itself helps to keep the event from, you know, possibly messing up or wrecking anything on the outside, you know, no children are going to be there. I think that's really a key for me, that there's no smoking. And I do also, like Phyllis was saying, you know, I trust our local police and our local fire and our, and our board, you know, that we're going to try to make the best decisions for a village. And looking down, Winterfest, it's going to be a great event. I love it, the Cornwall and Hudson coming together to have just a great showing of holiday fun, you know, there's lots of kids' events that are going to be there, and the way that we all come together, it's a great feeling, it really truly is, and we have our two trees, but we come together in one night to light them both, and I'm a huge fan, and I guess that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Trustee Brain?
No, I think I've spoken enough tonight. Thank you all for all the services that you provide to the village and to the board, and to the people who come out and speak. Thank you very much.
Trustee Conrad?
Happy Thanksgiving, that's it for me.
Thank you, back at you. And Deputy Mayor King?
Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy.
All right, that is it. Any alibis from department heads? Joe?
Well, I just feel, since I spent so much time on my phone tonight, I just want to let the board know, I was looking at the village code and the village law, not playing solitaire. So, just so nobody thinks I was playing solitaire.
Have memorized it, though?
Excellent. All right, thank you. For me, keep in mind that when I close a meeting, that the mics will still be hot until Doris shuts us down. The board is going to stay behind for executive session, which means everybody else has to exit here and close the doors. So, with that said, I'm going to make a motion to close the meeting. May I have a second?
If you're going, wait, wait, if you're going into executive session, that's part of the meeting.
You're right, you're right. I'm going to make a motion to close the regularly scheduled business meeting...
No, 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 just make a motion to go into executive session.
Executive session, all right. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I know you think, Vis, you think after all this time, I would have figured this out?
I have to have an executive session. I'll be jazzed.
It's going to be tough tomorrow, I got to take my little one down to the city for something. Yeah. Got it, got it, got it.
We got it next week.
Okay, you know what, Rick, let's do it next week.